The people who are standing, but the room's capacity is only thirty-seven people. But I think we have, we do have the spokesman here and we have some of the town leadership here. So what I would anticipate in this is not everybody is going to get to speak. We did get some impact letters from, sorry about that, from, from the First Church, from the Village Green, from the library, and then we got the Main Street Business Letter to the Sterling Select Port also. So we've had an opportunity to look it over as have our fire, DPW, and police. So I would expect some proper decorum in the room. I can't imagine that anybody wants to go after anybody else for any given reason. So what we're going to open with is you all got, well, most people got the fact sheet that we put together and that was between police, fire, and DPW, and the town administrator, myself. And that's, that's going to explain to, that explains to you the where, when, how, and why's. And we're going to have Ryan Meridian from the DPW go to the podium and speak first.
Meeting board members and members of the audience, the line painting project evolved from a long-term
Excuse me?
Yes.
Ryan Meridian, DPW.
Sterling DPW. Sorry. I loved your introduction, Mrs. Chairwoman.
Well, some of the emails, some of the emails we got.
Absolutely.
A long Ryan.
So the line painting product evolved from long-term plans to improve both safety and function of the downtown areas. The town of Sterling has only been looking to improve parking dating back as far as two thousand and seven. What follows is a bit of a timeline explanation of grant programs and project goals. A project affectionately known as the Downtown Revitalization has seen several iterations and has recently been rekindled with new local and grant funding to push this project to completion. Aside from new sidewalks and underground electric and communication lines, one of the missions of this project is to reconfigure the intersections in the downtown area, create dedicated parking areas, and expand the parking lot in front of the library. Over the past several years in response to complaints from motorists and residents, the DPW painted yellow curbs, installed signs, and painted no parking on certain areas of Main Street. Unfortunately, these measures were largely ignored. In April of two thousand and twenty-one, the town was awarded a Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation that was submitted by the former town planner. The awarded amount was a one hundred and seventy thousand dollars and was intended to complete bits and pieces of the downtown revitalization work, such as installing granite curbing and grass around the green space at the corner of Meeting House Hill and Main Street, and several other granite curbing bump outs in various crosswalks and intersections along Main Street. With the departure of the town planner and town administrator in late two thousand and twenty-one, myself and the new town administrator were tasked with using the grant funds for projects within its intended scope. We coordinated with Mass DOT to take the funds in a different direction. In conjunction with Mass DOT, we came up with the idea of having an engineering company create a line striping plan to closely mimic the plans for the downtown revitalization, which had been in the works for some time. In August of two thousand and twenty-two, a contract was signed with Green International Affiliates to create a road marking plan from Princeton Road to Bridge Street to include Park Street, Meeting House Hill Road from Park Street to Main Street. The cost of the design was fifty-three hundred dollars. The consultant was provided a copy of the most recent downtown revitalization plan, which showed parking spaces under the proposed conditions of the project. The mission laid out to the consultant was to safely maximize parking under existing conditions, and they were to do so using best practices for safe vehicle implementation. With input from the fire department, a diagram of two fire lanes to be incorporated in front and alongside the First Church was sent to the consultant. The plan was completed in October of two thousand and twenty-two, at which time it was reviewed by the fire department, police department, DPW, and town administration prior to being presented to the town governing boards. The plan was presented to both the select board and DPW board at separate publicly posted meetings on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. The plan was approved by both those boards at that time. The goal for the work, for the work was to complete it before Memorial Day of two thousand and twenty-three, as it was too late in the season to paint lines with the cold weather upon us. The plan maintained two eleven-foot lanes for traffic calming. It looked at sightlines from all side streets, driveways, and crosswalks to create what are called gore areas, or areas where obstructions in the roadway would inhibit sightlines of both motorists and pedestrians. There has been a misconception out there that these areas are all fire lanes. They are not. They are simply areas where if a vehicle is parked, it will greatly obstruct sightlines from exiting vehicles or crossing pedestrians. The cost for the contractor to execute the plan was approximately fourteen thousand dollars, bringing the grand total of the project to just under twenty thousand, or approximately eleven percent of the awarded grant funds. The remaining grant funds were used to purchase several flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs that will be used for the downtown revitalization project as well as near the schools. The executed striping plan delineated fifty on-street parking and two dedicated handicap spaces. The proposed downtown revitalization plan is proposing fifty-one on-street parking spaces along with the same two dedicated handicap spaces. For the existing parking layout, there was no mention of these spaces being ADA compliant. We simply recreated the two existing handicap spaces, so there were two spaces designated for handicap parking only. The ADA aspect focuses on the curb cuts in building access, which was not part of this project. Municipalities are not required to provide on-street handicap parking. However, we are required to create ADA curb cuts and ramps when structural modifications are made to a roadway or sidewalk, such as when the downtown revitalization project is completed. There is proposed to be less gore striping in the revitalization project, as those areas will be reconfigured via curb relocation. The objective of this project was to organize the downtown parking and make the already congested downtown areas safer for pedestrians and motorists alike. The improvements that were made have been modeled off plans that have been in place for over fifteen years. Having a forty-foot wide roadway with only a double yellow in the middle of the road is not a safe or favorable condition for vehicles or pedestrians. As always, the town of Sterling seeks to prioritize safety and function for our residents, businesses, and visitors. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ryan. And David, would you like to speak to the fire department portion of this, please?
David Hurlbut, Fire Chief, Town of Sterling.
Very good, David.
On July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, a formal meeting was held with the First Church Operations Committee to talk about fire code issues at the church. One of the items discussed was the need to establish fire lanes. Doug Davis was the leader of the group at that time, and this was documented via email. On September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, an email was sent to Ross Perry and Dominica, who was the town planner at the time, after requests for feedback, replanning for the implementation of Shared Streets and Space Grant. In that email, it was included following graphics, and there was a picture of that, I believe, might be in the packages, but if no, the graphics included what the fire lanes would look like. Following that email, there was conversation with both the operations committee, Ross, Dominica, and the fire department relative to the impact of those fire lanes to the overall need for parking. Most of that was in person and not documented at the time. After taking everyone's feedback into consideration, Lieutenant Coconak of the Fire Department agreed to compromise by keeping the fire lane between the church and the library, because that is also access to the fire sprinklers system for the library. Moving the fire lane on the street to the parish hall side by extending the existing no parking area there by fifteen to twenty feet. This still gives us access to a hydrant and keeps us out of the collapse zone of the steeple, even though approach for us would be less than ideal and is much closer to the building than we would prefer. Soon after that, Doug Davis stepped down and Janet Madison was reassigned as the liaison to the fire department by the church. And that was March of two thousand and twenty-one. So all of this was explained to her, what had been documented since two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and twenty-two, Craig Leader became the liaison to the fire department, and all of this information was again shared with, with Craig. And in the process of meeting with him, Lieutenant Coconak drafted a letter to explain, which included where the requirements of establishment of fire lanes would be. This resulted in a letter dated August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and was delivered in person to Mr. Leader at the meeting at the fire station. Again, this letter included a map showing the designated fire lanes in conjunction with fire hydrants and no parking areas as they would exist. Shortly after that, the map was shared with Ryan Meridian from the DPW and the overall planning that was done in the town center. The fire lane issue was actually driven by a couple of specific calls. One was in October of two thousand and twelve, when a preschool student with a head injury required an ambulance during parent pickup, and the ambulance had no access due to illegally parked cars in front of the building. The second was on a fire call, when a combination of parking issues and the evacuation of the building, because there was a smoke condition, resulted in fire apparatus being unable to access the front of the building. So had that been an actual fire, it would have been very difficult for us to stretch any of those lines. And that's what led up to the fire department and the requirements of the fire lane situation. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, David. Um, just to be clear, I know on one of our letters, it mentioned the Village Green preschool, and there's no discussion of parents not being able to drop their kids off at the preschool without, they're not going to get ticketed. They're not going to get asked to move. They can drop off their kids, get back in the car, and leave. That's, so that's, that's one question. The other one that struck me as basically took me aback a bit was the idea that funerals would have to park across the street from the sanctuary and wheel their coffins across the street. That is misinformed, in that there's no town anywhere that would, would make you do that. I spoke to Mr. Mansfield from Miles anyway, because he was concerned about that. The funerals will go on as is, and if, you know, everything would go on as is, as far as if we have to block off the road for a funeral, if that's what we've done in the past, that's what we will do. Nobody's going to ticket the hearse, trust me, or the coffin as it wheels across the street. It's going to be, no, they're not going to do that, Sarah. They're going to be, those two things right off the bat, I can say that are easily accommodated. And Sean, would you like to say a few words as far as the police department goes and what your expectations are moving forward?
Sean Garret, Chief of Police. I have to defer to the engineers who've studied the state and federal guidelines for safety. From what I see, we've had complaints in the past about pedestrians in the crosswalk almost getting hit and things like that. So the line of sights are much better, in my opinion. So we're the enforcement end at, at your behest, so we'll go with what the engineers think is the safest, and we'll work with that. Yes, there's been some misinformation about conversations that I had. The question was whether or not they were standing versus parking long-term, and it was never any intention to intimate that hearse's were going to be ticketed. It was the ones that were parked there all day, which we do have on a frequent basis. So there's definitely been some perpetual misinformation the last two weeks on what my original conversation was.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Kirsten, any input?
Honestly, I've gone to several businesses downtown in the last few weeks. I find it to be safer than ever to cross Main Street, and I would encourage all of you here, anyone watching, please come down, eat at a local restaurant, shop at a local store, get your hair cut. It's safe, there is parking. You may have to walk a little bit further than you did before, but it is safe to do so now.
I concur. I think the line of sight is, is much better now. I know I frequent the Brick Restaurant quite often, and usually it's at dusk, and it's very difficult previously to cross this road while cars are really moving around the corner here. So, I mean, it may be an inconvenience for some people, but I think the, I think the engineers did a nice job of laying it out, and, you know, nobody liked change, so that's where we're at right now.
Okay, and Andrew is here as a spokesman for the businesses in the center of town.
Good evening. Andrew Bluestein, Emmens Cafe, owner, operator, Emmens Cafe. I also own the property thirty-seven Main Street, which is on, as well as I own a house here in Sterling, Sixth Cynthia Lane. So not only am I here for my business, but I'm also here as a resident. My kids go to school there, so. So I had something written, but just, I'm going to go a little off script, because I really appreciate the time and effort DPW did. I didn't know of any, you know, background or, you know, any, you know, with the time and effort that you guys looked at, the amount of, you know, traffic patterns and the spacing and everything like that, so I appreciate that. Of course, I appreciate Chief Hurlbut and the safety concerns and everything that the fire department has and what have you. The sightline for the crosswalk, I would just say that, that's more, it has to do with speeding. You know, and I see the cars speed. My father's eighty years old. He crosses that crosswalk that I think you're talking about, Princeton, and I worry every single time he crosses. I have to, you know, literally stand out there and wait, you know, just to make sure, because cars, trucks, buses, tractor trailers are going, you know, forty-plus miles an hour. So just a side note on that, I mean, I do appreciate it, but, so anyway, as I said, you know, I'm representing not only Emmens Cafe, but I'm representing the following organizations, restaurants, I'm sorry, residents, businesses, and visitors. And it's a large one. Envy Fitness, The Brick, No Town Goods, Woody's Barber Shop, Apple Town Market, Century Twenty One and Local Realtors, Sterling Center, Senior Center, Blue Heron, Yahoo, First Church in Sterling, Operations, The Outreach and Governance, Pizza Church, Youth Ministry, La Romanana, Medical Mission, Food is Love, Community Lunch, Sterling Community Theater, John Powers Auction, Village Green Preschool, Friends of the Conan Library, the Sterling Historical Society, Miles Funeral Home, The Boy Scouts, The Girl Scouts, Wounded Warrior Yoga, Garden Club, and the Sterling Street Market and Guitar. I've met with all these people. I was part of a group with all of these business owners, residents, constituents. Guest safety and our business's viability are our leading concerns. Just a quick background, I had a successful business in Stowe for over eight-plus years. It was the same cafe that I had here. This was going to be my second location. I was recruited by the town of Sterling and the EDC. And one of the, one of the incentives that they showed me for moving my business and spending, and, you know, investing a lot of money here in Main Street was that the parking was ample and was all over, and, you know, your guests could access and everything like that. So I thought it was definitely a, a big plus. We opened in April, two thousand and twenty-two, haven't stopped since. It's been very busy. I'm very humbled by the response we've had, and I'm also very humbled when people and residents come and tell me that Sterling downtown has never been this exciting and vibrant, and that Emmens Cafe is one of the main reasons for this new life. So I'm, you know, like I said, I'm very humbled by that. However, I and all those other businesses that I mentioned, we're deeply concerned about the recent partner changes and how it's going to impact our customers' ability to access all of our businesses and therefore our ability to succeed. Like I said, all of, all of the concerns are shared equally by the businesses. The lines have been painted for just over, you know, just about two weeks. I welcome any of you, appreciate, you know, you say that you're coming down here. Come on a Sunday at eleven o'clock, when every single parking space is, is taken up by, you know, the church and elderly and the handicap, and I'm serving about three hundred people that day in Emmens Cafe. Or Saturday, this last Saturday, the market was closed because of weather, but the Memorial Day weekend was gorgeous, seventy-five degrees. We served about five hundred people that day in Emmens Cafe, and the market, I don't know what their numbers are, but I'm sure it was, you know, it was packed, it was busy. You know, it's, it's vibrant, it's great, it's what, it's what I moved my business here for, and it's definitely, as a resident, something great to see, everything that's happening. People are still speeding, people are still going by, there's, and I'm not, I'm not trying to blame anyone, you know, for that, but, you know, you can, you can put as much painted lines and what have you, people aren't going to follow it. You know, I'm a big supporter of the police. To have a, a police car like across from us, let's say, you know, right in this parking lot, I think goes a long
Sightline?
I mean, anywhere, I think would go a long way than, you know, and, I mean, my job on a, on a Saturday like that is to take care of my guests, to make sure my food is hot and looking great, keeping our place clean, and I was a traffic attendant there that day. We had people parking in the bushes of our neighbor. I had people, you know, not, you know, parking illegally, parking by my dumpster, parking, you know, anywhere that they, that they could. It blocked up our online pickup window, it just, you know, it's, it wasn't communicated to the businesses, could have communicated it to the guests, you know, it just, it was, it was, it was chaos, it really was. And I'm better prepared for it now, going into this weekend. In this short time, we've already made some adjustments. And, you know, that's the thing, I mean, we're here for solutions. You know, we, at Emmens Cafe, we, we employ sixteen people in the community. I employ sixteen people. Eight of them are full-time. We used to take up all the spots on Maple, on Maple Street. I've moved, I've asked my employees to move now. Now we take up spots here at the Butterick Building. On Saturday and Sunday, we park all the way in the back by the electrical vehicle chargers, because my guys are more able and more, you know, you know, they can walk more than all the people that are coming, let's say, to whatever, the church or No Town Goods on a Sunday or something like that. Well, I think she's closed, but. So we're going to make the effort to do that, you know, to open up, I mean, that's eight spots that we could open up. Maybe it's a drop in the bucket, but at least it's, it's something.
Every spot counts.
Every spot counts, absolutely. I a hundred percent agree with you. You know, were my employees happy about it? Not really, but, you know, they, they understood, and they understand that they make tips off of the amount of people that could come, come into our place. You know, two quick, two quick stories. I have one, a gentleman comes pretty much every single day. He gets his iced coffee, his iced cold brew, and he tried coming on that Saturday for, on Memorial Day weekend, and it was a traffic line to get into Emmens Cafe. There were people on Main Street in the cars, stopped, not able to get into Emmens Cafe, and he said, screw it, he's not waiting, and he went somewhere else to get his coffee. So yeah, it's only, you know, five dollars for a coffee, but still, it's revenue that we lost. It's a guest that we serve every single day that now went somewhere else. You know, my, my team and I, we're not going to see that revenue anymore. I also have another story. It's an elderly woman, she's, you know, easily over seventy-five years old, and her husband is handicapped, and every single Sunday after church, they come over to Emmens Cafe and they get their salad and clam chowder. And so the husband's handicapped, and she came and I saw her, and I know, I know her car, because she's actually my neighbor's mother, and so I know her from that, and I know the car. And I saw she parked in my handicap spot. So I saw her, and she never parks in the handicap spot. And, you know, I met her and, you know, came out, got her at the table and stuff, and she was like exhausted, and it's because, I'm like, you know, what's going on? So she told me her whole story of the day, as they're going to church, as they always do, they didn't have anywhere to park, so she had to drop off her husband, who's handicapped, on the sidewalk, leave him there, then circle around, try and find parking, found parking in the Butterick Building, all the way towards the back. She's not the most nimble woman herself, she walked all the way back to get her husband, who's standing on the sidewalk, finally got to him, went in, enjoyed the church services and everything, then afterwards, came out, left him on the sidewalk, went back to get her car, go get the husband, tried getting to Emmens Cafe. It took her a good ten, fifteen minutes just to get down there and around and what have you, found my, my handicap spot, parked in there, and did the whole thing, took her about a half hour just to get across the street to our cafe, so she could have her, you know, so the husband could have her clam chowder. I don't know what they're going to do in January or February when it's snowing or anything like that, but again, it's, you know, we're all here for safety, I a thousand percent agree, but this is, you know, this speaks to the viability of, you know, all of our businesses, because the guests that come to my business, they go to No Town Goods, they go to, you know, I have another story, if you really want to hear.
No more story.
I know, right? They go to Apple Town to get a gallon of, of milk while they stay parked in my, in my parking lot. We're all doing the same, people, we're all taken care of, you know, the same Sterling residents and what have you. So we all have to make it accessible for everybody. And just one thing I didn't want to forget, I, again, you know, I'm not coming off the wrong way, but, you know, we have a very strong following of guests that come to us from where I was in Stowe. I was in Stowe for eight years, every single day coming to this town are my old guests from Stowe. Not only Stowe, Maynard, Sudbury. People are traveling a half hour just to get to Emmens Cafe, eat, enjoy, find parking, relax, and what have you. Then afterwards, they're going to go and they're going to shop, they're going to, you know, someone said get their hair cut, you know, they're, they're going to do other things within the town. Good business brings good business, and the money is shared amongst everybody. So we're getting an influx of, of people from outside of Sterling. I, I, I don't want, you know, people to think that this parking is just a Sterling, you know, resident kind of thing. It's, it's everywhere, myself, and I'm sure the other businesses in town also, actually, I know they are, but I draw people all the way from the city of Worcester, you know, and Rutland and Princeton and everything. So there are a massive amount of people that are coming to the town and only looking to grow more and more from it. So it's not just a Sterling, you know, a Sterling resident thing, because I guess they'd ask me that. But anyway, I'm really here, you know, I really hope, you know, I've, I think I've served all of you guys in the cafe, and hope you've enjoyed your lunches and everything, but I just hope that we can, as businesses, as residents, as constituents, that we can work with you guys in the select board, find sound improvements that can make downtown Sterling safer and more accessible for all. We'll take the opportunity to collaborate with you, continue pursuing improvements by any means available until the situation is satisfactory or until we become unable to do so, because we are not only residents, we're your constituents. As requested, we've previously submitted a letter to the select board ahead of this meeting, I believe it was delivered last Friday. We're eager to hear any state, any general responses to the letter or to my statement, you know, and again, just to make downtown Sterling safer, because I feel that the, you know, whoever did the outlines and everything, they could have done it perfectly to the T, to the law, to what have you, but it's just, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it's feasible for what's happening in the town and the businesses. So that's my story, I'm sticking to it.
Sticking to it.
All right? Thank you for being able to speak. Yeah. Oh, and I have, I actually, not just my joint impact statements, sorry, I have
Yeah, we didn't get any of those.
These are just from, from residents, from constituents, from businesses.
Yeah.
It's about like three, four dozen people that are affected by, who can't be here and what have you.
Yeah. I heard they were coming, but I didn't, we didn't get them, so we can scan them and I'll
Yeah, take your time on reading them, but it's pretty impactful.
Now I'm just saying. But because we've gotten it from both sides, you know, we've gotten the ones that are, you know, like what's being done downtown, feel safer, like the sightline. So you have both sides of the coin, both sides of the road, and we all get that. When you, one thing I would say, we can't come up with all these solutions right now, but I would encourage, you know, yeah, we need to get together, and maybe if you, if you do it, I mean, I wish this had been done, I wish we had gotten together. I mean, on our part, yes, maybe we could have communicated better. I mean, it was done, as Ryan said, at public meetings, et cetera, and so on. It's been in the works since two thousand and seven, you know, and, and unfortunately, not everybody knows these things. A couple of things that you did ask for are already accessible. The plans that you asked for, all of that is on the website. So the old plans, new plans, what the future holds, et cetera, and so on, for, for what's happening downtown. Quick solutions, like I said, Village Green parents, dropping off their kids, not a big deal. The funeral's not a big deal. You talked about your employees and parking in this lot, and that would have been one of my suggestions, and that, I know where I work, we pretty much park as far away from the where I work, we pretty much park as far away from the particular spot as possible because you have all these other people coming in. And so I would encourage, and I have asked Bill, and I've talked to the town employees, I would like to see them park in the back of the Butcher Building lot, as opposed to along Trainers Building, or even in front of the building. So that gives access to not only the downtown businesses, but it also gives access to the town hall business. So that's one little step for mankind or for Sterlingites to view. Some things I know right off the top, we wouldn't be able to do, and a lot of these things, the monetary things, as far as, you know, let's get it going as soon as possible. I would have liked to have seen this get going in 2007 when it came off the shelf, you know, but ultimately, that did not happen. So there's those things. You know, special events, again, in the past, we haven't had a problem with, yes, you are a new addition to task, but we haven't had a problem with Memorial Day Parade, you know, and those people stealing the seats to get that parade view, you know. We haven't had that problem before. We haven't really had problems with the Village Green preschool, always dangerous, always dangerous. I brought my kids there, I brought my grandkids there, you know, so I know, I'm familiar with that. I, the other things, some of the other things that are asked for, we can look at and we can work on. And like I said, I wish we had been able to do this before it became such an issue on, you know, Facebook and social media and things like that. I mean, that, that made me, that was disconcerting for me. But, and just me, I don't know how these people feel. I mean, my color part's not these people. But, you know, and yes, the plans were done, and they were done legally, and the spots that we feel that we lost, they were never legal in the first place. As Ryan had mentioned, and again, before you, Andrew, we had the curbs all painted yellow. Nobody paid attention to it. As a matter of fact, it's so bad, you know, people scraping up against them and weather and all that, it all disappeared. So this was an effort to make all of that legal. The other thing that I would have people keep in mind, that there are plans down the road. You know, right now, we're working with the 1835 and trying to get the septic system set up and over to the fire station. You say, what does that do for me? Well, it does a lot for you in that. Once that's done, the owner of 27 Main Street has said that he'll pave it, we'll lease it, and we'll take care of it as far as plowing, et cetera and so on. So that, that's additional spacing a little closer to the businesses. The other thing that we have discussed, and again, monetary, is over on Cross Street. You know, we go over there anyway for the Memorial Park, not just for the parade, but for the concerts during the summer, and people park in there diagonally. So we're looking at that, possibly paving and actually making it a diagonal parking. The Sterling Street Market, I mean, I think we all love what it brings. I never get to go to it because I'm always working that day, but just when I see it, when I view it on the street view on the computer, I love it. There's so many people and so many things going on, and that's what you want to have happen in your town. And, but we can certainly address that in the problems that it causes on a, particularly the community lunch day, which is the first Saturday of the month. We can approach them and say, listen, you have a couple of choices. You either don't have the street market on the first Saturday of the month and just have it the next three or four weeks, or we can move it over to Memorial Park. You know, little bit off the beaten path for them, but you know what, they have enough of a following that that can happen. And that's walkability from not just your business, but everybody else. So it's not like we haven't thought about these things and we haven't talked about them. It's just like nobody ever comes, you know, to, to these meetings, not just this meeting, but, you know, the DPW meetings. And not, not saying that you should. I mean, I think you should, but that's just me. But at least read the minutes from these meetings afterwards so you know what's going on, or they're all video. You can, you don't even have to watch them the same day. You can watch them, you know, when you're doing absolutely nothing the next day in Borden City. You can watch on, online, or you can go to Channel 99 and watch it on there. So we have talked about it. We want to work, obviously. I love having the business. I had a business here myself. You don't wanna know how many years ago. And the funny thing about that, and it's not that it's funny, it's just funny because guess what one of the biggest problems were?
Parking.
No way! Seriously, though. I mean, when you went from where Kindoff's are now, that was an antique store. You were a bank. Then you had the Griffin Building, which was the ice cream parlor and five different offices, doctors, lawyers, Indian chiefs, all in that building. Then you had what was the town hall with the police station, all there. And then you had Aubuchon's, the cafe, and as David, Chief David said to me, he goes, and did you clean up your own horse dung, Maureen? It wasn't really that long ago. I mean, there's people in this room that will remember it. Yes, he said that to me. I know I'm old, I'm okay with it. But, but those are the things that, you know, I think about, back then, it was a problem. And, and now, it's, it's, it's a problem, but it's not a problem we can't solve. And, and it's not just up to you to solve it, it's up to all of us to look at. Like, I got an aerial view of what's actually up, what's the name of the street? Up above the library, you know, the Underwood property, you know, there's five acres up there. Is there any way that we can, you know, possibly purchase a couple of acres and put a parking lot up there? You know, these are things, have we approached that property owner? No, we haven't, but maybe we should. You know, so, so those are the, all the things that if we work together, and I'm not just saying, let's work together and let's, you know, chit chat over email and let's not, definitely don't go on the community page with it, you know, let's get together and solve this, what may be a problem at the moment. And again, I would ask any of the businesses downtown, 27 Main Street, all their employees should be parking out back if, if that's the way. The same, Apple Town Market has parking behind there. You have the fire station, which are willing to share their parking spaces, that next to Westminster Credit Union, but even behind there, you know, so, so there are solutions to it. And No Town, there's, there's a little parking in there too, you know, so I think we all have to...
Nine parking.
Huh?
Right.
She doesn't wanna share. I know that. But anyway, it's just, you know, those are the things that we, we can think about and look at as a community.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that sentiment. I think it's, you know, and that's really all the business owners throughout, you know, Main Street, Sterling. It's all we want is like some collaboration. I don't have the answers. I don't...
Come on!
I wasn't expecting, I wasn't expecting any solutions tonight, but, you know, there's...
But those are quickies.
Yeah, those are quickies, and there's definitely reasonable and, you know, you know, things that you guys may not know as well as us as business owners may not know and everything. So, you know, that's all we're asking, in a sense, is, you know, going forward just to be part of it. And, you know, I mean, I, just like everyone else, I got, you know, two kids. One of them is on the track team, one of them's in baseball, and, you know, I don't have time to just sit and not do anything and watch...
Come on, Andrew!
Watch the community, yeah, but, you know, we'll find it.
When you say, when you say you don't have any solutions, I will quote an old friend of mine who has now died, and yes, he was part of that 40 years ago. And don't bring me a dead cat without a shovel.
Right.
So, think about that one. All right, so the, the conclusion is, for now, we'll do the quickie fixes that we can do. We'll be considerate of our fellow citizens and not take up parking spaces that are good for the businesses. You know, as myself, I mean, I come to town hall all the time, as you know, and park out back, call it a day, you know, and save that spot for somebody to either go to your place or to Woody's or to Leanne's, wherever they wanna go. The handicap thing, I, you know, that's a bigger fish to fry, you know. How do we get from, you know, here to there, you know, or any of the businesses? But I think there was some talk about adding, you know, or putting back one, not putting back, 'cause it was never there, but putting another handicap spot in front of the parish hall and the first church. So that's definitely, you know, a step forward for that particular thing. But unfortunately, I don't see us being able to cover all of the handicap situation right off of that. As Ryan said, as we move forward, we can, not we can, we will have that accessibility on the Main Street also. You know, getting out of your car, getting up the sidewalk. Sidewalks are a mess, that's admittedly a mess. And, and there's a plan for that too. And like I said, it's all on the website, you know, and, and just take the time to look at it, you know. That's not as boring as some of the meetings. It's a little bit more interesting. But, Curious, do you have anything to add?
I actually wanna give a shout out to the elderly woman who brought her husband and spent half an hour. She adapted to the situation, showed resilience. You know, she made it work because she wanted to make it work.
She's a resilient person.
It can be done. You know, there are things in the works to help, but in the meantime, you know, rather than play victim, she made it work. And we can all come together and make it work.
David?
So I just wanna state that all of us at official capacity, as well as our volunteers, we're all pro-business. We're not doing this to harm any business in any way. I mean, we understand that you drive the town. But at the same time, we try to balance safety and liability, right? So you throw that in a mixing bowl and stir it up and let's see what comes out of it, right? So I'm sure that there's gonna be some positive outcomes from this, and we'll just have to keep working and come up with a solution.
All right. So, um...
And the library.
The li, we are, um...
And the church.
If anybody wants to speak, they could either raise their hands, although we're not opening, oh no, we're not opening the floor to everybody, okay? I think Andrew covered what he needed to. Peter, you've been covered. Karen, what are you looking at?
Safety.
Safety, okay. So we're, we're all on the same page. We're all looking for safety, both fire, walking, et cetera and so on.
Immediate safety. Immediate safety.
Yeah. So we'll work on that. You know, immediate, you mean like right this minute? You want me to walk you to Karen?
Yeah, I have, yeah.
Yeah. No, well, here, here is one thing, you know, and I know that part of it was up here on the corner of Meeting House and Park. That is never a safe area. When you're coming off of Meeting House Hill, you are either, you know, gonna, by, by luck, this not, and this kills me when people say, well, this has never happened. Well, how many times do we read something where it says, well, this has never happened, and all of a sudden it's happened in our town? Whether it be, you know, an accident or fire. I mean, look what happened down at Choxa and Route 12. You know, that rotary was probably the safest that ever went in. But for years, you held your breath as you got through that intersection. It took time. So this was a fix in that, don't park there. You know, just don't. And we can't put a crosswalk there right now. That's the way it is.
Why not? Why?
It's, it's, right?
The, the work is laid out right now. There's nowhere to cross from and to. It's something that I would like to have Green take a look at and see if there's an option anywhere on Park Street to put. But, I mean, it's not as if we have an answer tonight, much like the rest of the items.
Yeah. You can't, there's, I guess what I would ask you to do is draw up how you would put a crosswalk there. All right?
I just thought, maybe, Roseanne, ma'am, I just thought maybe a, a solution for now is all the abled-bodied people park over here, so leaving spaces for people who are not so able, or families with children who need the spaces. Able-bodied people can easily walk. The other thing that I might suggest is a police presence for a while, so that they can direct traffic and have things move around the town. If somebody's speeding, then that can be addressed at the time. Those are just instant solutions that I can think of that, that may make a difference.
That would have to be a weekend thing only, because if you go on the live stream and you watch what's happening during the week, right now, because it's summertime, so hopefully, not summertime yet, but close, when, if you look at that, there's absolutely nothing going on downtown today.
I'm talking about the school area and stuff like that.
But even there, because they're on summer, right, but they'll be starting with their summer program shortly. So I think that what you would wanna do is, Karen, because you're Village Green and you are, talk about safety, let's get together with Chief Cadet and see what we can do for the time being to make it a little bit safer for your classes this summer.
Well, we're already in session.
You started already?
Hopefully I've been playing traffic cop because I don't want my families to get hurt.
We all are...
Well, the thing is, you're not, you don't, they can drop off their kids still, as I said, but I...
How about we close the road on, like we do on a Sunday?
No, you can't do that. You can't. You're talking about, you, you have to keep in mind that we, all of these people, have to think about 8,000 people, not just a few hundred. That's, that's what it is. So you can't close down a road every day for that. It's, it's just not feasible at the moment.
Can I get it in writing, or can I get something that's...
You get what in writing?
That our, our preschool parents can park where they used to park.
They can do drop-off there.
Right. Well, they have to park for five to 10 minutes.
Yeah, yes, we can do that in writing.
Today, every day, there's been a police at our building asking, whose car is this?
Every day.
Every day. Ready to hand out tickets or warnings, I don't know.
No, you're not doing that.
Well, they have them.
I don't think any tickets are being handed. I believe they've all been warned. They're trying to get these...
Or just make sure that the parents, no, what?
But they're telling them they can't park where they're going.
They can drop off their kids.
They can drop off.
Two-year-olds don't walk themselves across the street into the building the parents have to take.
We're not saying that. What?
It can take 10, 15 minutes to get a toddler scuffled into preschool. If you're coming out and a police officer is standing next to your car within 15 minutes, it feels like you're being threatened with a ticket.
Well, you're not being threatened. You're just being made aware of the fact that you can't stay there.
Are you nervous why someone else is coming to your car?
During the day, which, I mean, I've had people down during the day and the evening so it's, we have had a significantly higher presence down here. But going back to what we said earlier, a lot of the spots that people were parking in or standing in for long periods were always illegal, but now that it's more defined, it's easy to enforce. Prior to that, people would ignore the yellow curbing, and they shouldn't have been there anyway. As to whether or not somebody's been there for 10 minutes versus two hours, that's tough to tell. I mean, short of the school coming up with maybe tags for their children so we know who's dropping off versus standing, but it's not something we can stand by and watch to see who's been there for 10 minutes or two hours.
Yeah. All right, so let's address that. I really am not going to, it's gonna be redundancy.
Library?
We're gonna talk about the library when we talk about the library.
Library parking?
We're gonna talk about the library when we talk about the library, which is the next thing on the agenda. Did not forget you. Peter?
Follow up. So, Peter Rezak, I never hear you circle. I just wanna understand how to follow up effectively. So it's clear there are a lot of concerns here, a lot of which have to do with immediate safety. I understand there may have been parking spots that were never legal. The fact is, there was a way of doing things that was not perfect. A lot of us are concerned that the way of doing things at the moment is substantially less safe, and it freaks us out. We want, we want that collaborative engagement, and I'd ask if there, if we can formalize what mechanism or what collaborative structure there is so that we can have effective follow-up. Because clearly, we can't work through it here tonight, and that's not the right mechanism. But it would be great if we could figure out how and when soon to begin working through it together.
Okay, I would say, after I talk to the other officials, that we can get together probably Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday of next week. And who wants to be involved? Peter, you wanna be involved?
I'd love to be involved.
From the church, and Andrew?
Sure.
Right during lunch, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no, not lunch. Karen, what's your availability?
I'll make myself available.
Okay, well, what time is the school?
Until 1:00.
So after 1:00, well, that would work better for Andrew too, so we could even make it after 2:00. Peter, how's that work for you?
I will work hard to clear my schedule or to delegate.
I'll work hard to clear mine too. And if any of you gentlemen, Bill, definitely you, Ryan, Sean, Fire, yes. So I'll put something out to that effect, that on Tuesday. And Peter, just leave me with your email address?
Yeah.
Okay. And then at that time... Okay. And then at that time, too, we can go through some other concerns and see what we can come up with as far as an immediate fix. Not immediate, but as soon as possible fix, okay?
I have some questions that have not been asked yet.
With regards to--
With regards to the parking situation and the plans that were drawn up.
Okay.
I looked at the timeline when I, when I got in here, and I appreciate the timeline being printed. This information has been actually really difficult to find. I appreciate--
Would you please--
A, introduce yourself. My name is Jennifer Colburn. I live on Camp Brown Road here in Sterling. I have been a lifetime resident here in Sterling. And I am a member of First Church, but my specific concerns really have nothing to do with the actual church. I am a disabled resident of the town of Sterling. And first off, I, I need to say, Kristin, that comment you made, the way you phrased that was absolutely disgusting. It was absolutely disgusting.
Can we, can we--
I have been, I'm going to, I just needed to say that.
Jen.
I have been dealing with disability for a very long time. I have been in pain for a very long time. Walking on my good days is okay. On my bad days, it feels like I'm walking on broken glass every step I take. So to say, "Oh, park further away is an option," it really is not for many disabled people, especially people who have to use crutches, or who are using canes, or who are using walkers, or who are using wheelchairs. Parking further away is not an option. If they cannot park on the street near the place that they want to go, they cannot get there. Right now, in these last two weeks, we've had people from this town who have not been able to get treatment that they needed, who have not been able to access the stores that they needed to go to and the businesses that they need to get to. My mother is sitting here next to me. She served on the fire department and ambulance for this town for 25 years. She's dealing with multiple forms of cancer. She cannot walk further. She can't even walk uphill.
Yeah, we're not asking you to walk further. We said we would address it--
Almost every solution that you've suggested so far has been just walk a little further. It's just a little further.
I don't think that was intended for the disabled.
But my question on this is, with every single point where you talked about who was addressed, who was consulted, where did you talk to anybody about access for people with disabilities?
And Jen, this is what I'm saying, this whole thing.
Why did we move forward with this to any point without talking to an advocate for people with disabilities?
It was, I'm sorry, that was addressed.
When?
ADA was addressed--
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Blaine Burchad, DPOW board member. Yeah, we addressed, we, it needed to be, and demanded it. I demanded it.
When was it?
The process, the process was, and it was all the way back with the previous plan. And she was like right in there with it. And nobody, nobody wants to do anything other than the best job that we can for all of our citizens, including people who can't move easily. I'm, I'm a retired architect. It's a big issue for me. It's a passion. So yes, it was addressed numerous times, numerous ways, and the engineer also addressed it on top of it and made suggestions. Now, there's--
Can I just say something that--
Yeah, go ahead.
We're talking, Jen, this is not the final cut of this plan.
Right, but the, but the cut that you've made right now cuts access for people with disabilities.
Where?
The church.
They can't get to the church. They can't get to the stores. Three times in the last two weeks--
How did you go to the store before?
I was able to park on the street because there was more street parking. There was more street parking, and we were able to park on the street. There's less street parking now, so there's more competition for the few spaces that are available. Last week, when I went to, tried to go to the businesses, I actually intended to stop at Nottown, the library lot was full, and there was a pickup truck taking up two spots over there, and there was no other on-street parking. There was none at the church at the time, because there was some meeting going on. There was no on-street parking downtown, and there was no parking in front here. The back lot here and the side is horrible for people with mobility issues. With the broken pavement and the dips and the uneven pavement--
You're correct.
You don't have the lines painted. That should have been done before you cut street parking.
That, that was just done two years ago.
But the lines are not painted. You can't see the street coming in. People are coming in and they aren't, don't already know that lot is back there. When they come in, they don't know there's even another lot back there till they're back there. So they come in and they look, they think there's no parking, and leave.
So at this point, Jen, we don't have a definitive answer for you, other than we'll do the best, they will revisit it, and we'll do the best we can. And then--
So what do we do for the people with disabilities in the meantime who can't access the stores?
We'll address that on Monday at 2:00. And see what we end up with.
So until then, they're on their own.
I think to Maureen's point, when she was asking people that are capable to park behind the building in the town parking area, would free up some spaces that are closer to the stores downtown.
If they're willing to do so.
Do you know how many people come to our church that--
All right, if, if nobody is just speaking out, if they want to be recognized, and actually, we're gonna, we, there's not a lot we can do right now. So Monday afternoon, we'll start with Andrew and Karen and Peter and the, the officials right here at that time. Okay, so I'm sorry if I couldn't satisfy, or we couldn't satisfy everybody. We knew, and when you sent us the note, it said we don't expect solutions. We can only do, do what we can for right now. So thank you all for coming.
Excuse me, I have one question that hasn't been answered. You mentioned--
Turn it off on yourself.
My name is Sandy Taffsey. You mentioned the 1835 project and the septic tank and all that. When were you planning on notifying the people who live there? I live at 3 Maple Street. No one told me you were about to pave my backyard.
You're not involved.
It's literally that field that you're talking about, where the septic tank is, or the Old Town Hall, looks into my bathroom.
No. It's going, that, that's, that has been, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Sandy.
Sandy. That has been a long-term thing. It's not, it, it's going from the town, the 1835, in the back of 27 Main and across. It's not at your house. It's--
It runs, the septic field for the Old Town Hall is behind my house.
Yeah, no, that's not where it's going.
That's your paving behind the firehouse, or the field is behind my house?
No. And that's another subject altogether, and if you want to know more about it, stop in, Sandy, because--
I would love to know about it.
Huh?
I would love to know about it.
Because that's, that has been a long, long-term project that the 1835 has worked on for years, and hopefully sooner rather than later it comes to fruition, because then again, I reiterate, we can pave that lot and have some additional parking anyway. But it still doesn't solve all the problems.
No, but the, the field that's there--
It doesn't have anything to do with this. That's a whole different project.
You called it a quickie solution. It was on your list.
Septic system?
You had more parking.
I never said that was a quickie--
The field that's there, you listed it on your list.
Oh, you, no, I'm talking about Cross Street. Cross Street is on the far side of the fire department.
I'm sorry. Yeah, she's, it's going to go behind the businesses over--
27.
--the field behind--
The fire station.
The fire station. It's not going to-- So you, were you just talking about the parking area itself being paved?
Yeah, eventually, yeah, yes. Eventually, that, that is in the whole project moving forward. It's not going to be done tomorrow. If you want to see where the septic line is going or where the easements are, stop in at Town Hall. It's in the planning offices. Or you can come see Bill. He has it. So, all right, we're moving on. Thank you all. You're late to the party. All right, so you guys are all set for--
Yep.
Monday at 2:00. I mean, Tuesday at 2:00, right? Monday? 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 And it's, thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions? Be ready. Yeah, where is here?
Terry gets home.
Thanks for coming. All right, so take a little break, get a little water, see what goes on.
Do you pay for it?
You want me to put Joe King on it? You want me to write Joe King on it?
I assure you, see? Make sure of that.
Karen, do me a favor.
I can do you a favor.
Just give me your email. Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Email, if you get a chance. All right, I know what your ideas are. I think Peter left them in the meeting. Okay, thank you. I can look it up. All right, the next thing on our agenda, as many would know, I, I try to invite some commissions and committees in to give us an update on what they're up to. And tonight, we've invited the library in, because they are like crazy busy with all kinds of special events and so on and so forth. So--
Alex Gribbmore, library director. Before I do my update, I just want to clear up, the Friends of the Library was not represented. They have not attended any meetings. They had nothing to do with any of the parking. So I know they were mentioned as being represented, but they were not.
Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome. So our update, I want to start with staffing. We've had a lot of staffing changes this year. In April, Phil Wolf retired after 18 years at the library. Yeah, so we wish him out. He still does stuff, and so we do get to see him a little bit. But we've also hired three new staff this year alone to fill vacancies, not for new spots. We started being lower-staffed in mid-October, and we were not fully staffed until May 1st. So we are very happy. We're fully staffed going into summer, which is our biggest busiest season. We've done a lot of training. The fire department and Jim Everton trained all of library staff and CPR and the AED. We do have an AED at the library now, so that was fantastic. We also have four staff members and possibly soon to be a fifth, who have applied for grants through the state for training, all different trainings, that we've all been accepted. And it would have cost us about $1,000 for all of those trainings together, so we are very happy to get some free training. Our collection this year has grown. We've been adding a lot of things that are not traditional, beyond books and movies. We have added puzzles for adults. They've been overwhelmingly popular. We were surprised. There are a lot of puzzlers in town, so we do have a lot of puzzles going out. We also have added a library of things to the children's room. We have over 50 items. Includes a fort building kit that we encourage people to take home on rainy weekends. We've gotten some great pictures of kids in these giant forts in their houses. We've added Nintendo Switch games. One of our most popular things is a Fockens field. It's fun. It comes back, and the staff play a little tune as they check it in. We've also done some coding toys, some STEM things that people can take home for a couple of weeks and try out. We've had a lot of board games and toys that people will try out before they decide to buy it for their house, especially around the holidays and things, they can try things out. We also added in the past year memory kits. We're part of the age and dementia-friendly committee in Sterling. And so we have five kits that are for caregivers and people with different dementions. They have toys, coloring pages, puzzles, but they have books for caregivers, DVDs, picture books, that kind of thing. So those have been really well-received so far this year. We also just, a few weeks ago, added Sterling community pages. There are notebooks that you can check out at the library, and we're encouraging people to write down memories of Sterling. There's one about recommendations. There's fan fiction, if you like to write fiction. So we're really hoping that those will start to take off, and people can record their memories of Sterling in particular. And you can check them out to read them, you can check them out to write in them and add to it as well. So that's something new for us. We, our, our hours are going to change. We are open 45 hours a week right now, 43 hours a week in the summer. Beginning July 1st, we're going to not reduce our hours, but we're going to go from being open 10 to 1, to 9 to 12. We're having a lot of people come in and say, "Oh, I drove by earlier on my way out, Jamie, I earned, but you weren't open yet." So we will be changing, we'll be moving up an hour. September to June, we'll open 9 to 2 instead of 10 to 3. So that is coming up.
That's every day, Alex?
No, we're 10 to 8, Monday through Thursday. Just Saturdays. Saturdays will move to 9.
Yeah, okay.
Programming is huge for us. We will have held well over 300 programs by the end of this fiscal year. At the end of May, we had over 4,900 attendees at our programs, so that's big for us. And we did all of that with low staff, which is great. We're up 45% compared to this time last year in attendance. And it just keeps growing. Our staff love throwing programs. We have all different things. Our adult programs especially have taken off. Our crafts, our last set of adult crafts were filled within two minutes of registration and billing. So we are adding more crafts. We don't have a programming line in our budget, so we fund it with money from the Friends, grants, and gifts and donations. The youth summer reading program starts June 20th. It is our busiest season because of that. It runs through August 10th. Kids birth to 18 can join in. Every two hours they read, they get a raffle ticket. They can be read, too, if they can't read yet. They can listen to audiobooks. We even say, "If you read the back of the cereal box while you eat breakfast, that counts." And we have great prizes donated by resident staff and the Friends that they're putting in their raffle tickets for. We also do 100 Books of Summer Challenge every summer. We're going to do it again this year. It's 100 picture books that staff have picked out, and we challenge families to read it. And I think, on what I had given you, I said about 25 people. I looked it up, it was actually 53 kids last year who accomplished 100 books or more in the summer. So they, if they accomplish it, they do get a prize. The past couple of years, it's been Rotas Springs gift cards. It'll probably be the same again, because everybody likes ice cream. And it's a fun thing for families to do. Even the parents get very like, "We need this book, we need that book," and they leave with huge stacks of books.
I want to talk about Chocolate Olympics.
I'm doing Chocolate Olympics. I love chocolate. Chocolate Olympics is coming up. That's one of our teen programs we're having. The theme this year is Find Your Voice. It's pretty open-ended. We're going to have a writing contest throughout the summer for kids. We have an open mic night for teens. We have Chocolate Olympics. And all sorts of things. We're teaching crochet, we're doing book clubs, we're doing all sorts of art programs. We've got one outside that we're going to be painting with Lyswater and Squirkums. And we'll have popsicles afterwards. It's our paint and popsicles. The, so we have over 50 programs. We also pull through a weekly dropping craft that will vary every week, but kids of all ages can just drop in. We do have a kickoff coming up for the summer reading program. It's sponsored by the Friends of the Library. And it is Scott Martell. It's a magician. It will be held June 28th at 11 o'clock at the First Church. No registration, anybody's welcome. And our kickoffs usually are pretty big. A couple of years ago, we had over 300 people. So we bring in people from other towns as well for those. The adult summer reading program will run the entire month of August as usual. Adults can come in each day. Every book or audiobook they take from the adult collection earns them a raffle ticket. Adult prizes are donated from local businesses, usually gift cards from places in the area. Adult programming is also huge. We're trying our first murder night, a murder mystery at the library. For adults, people will come in costume, and they'll be given a role a week before that they have to act out and find the murderer. So that should be fun.
How many people can you do that for?
For that, we can only do 12. Our program, if you haven't been in the library, our program is very small.
I know.
So we do, if we just have chairs, we can fit 18 to 20. Some of our bigger programs, cookbook club is huge every month, we can fit 14 very tightly. We're going to try to fit 15 this month because we also still have some on the waitlist who we're trying to get in. But we, space is our issue. We do use the senior center if we have bigger programs.
How about the 1835?
So we've used the 1835 for yoga before. We have not used it for other thi, oh, we've used it, we used it for a concert last, last summer as well. And that's true, we did a video game program as well on a happy day in March. So we have used it some. We have been told that there aren't a lot of chairs. We will certainly use it when there's plenty of seating.
What?
We're good.
Are we good now?
Now we are.
Okay, we didn't know that.
Yes, seriously, now.
Okay. Okay. So we can use it more. The senior center is nice because of the parking. So we do, we do have at least three things planned for this fall. We have a sourdough program.
Thank you, Alex.
We'll use the 1835, too. At the church, we generally just use for our kickoff because it's so big. We have done one outside at Memorial Park, but none of us like having to guess the weather, so we do aim for inside on that. The adult programs, we've got the murder mystery. We have a Scrabble and snacks group that meets every month. It's just a drop-in. Some of them are fierce Scrabble players. So anybody who enjoys Scrabble, we encourage you to come check it out. You don't have to register for that one. We have a Big Trees of Massachusetts by Kevin Martin. He's a local author. He's coming later this summer as well. We're trying out a new Fitlit Book Club. So we're all going to read the same book. We'll meet at the rail trail. And as we walk the trail, we'll discuss the book that we just read. So we'll do that this summer and see how that goes. We have drop-in knitting every week. And we have, as I said, the adult crafts are huge. So we have loads of adult crafts. Registration for everything in July and August opens this coming Monday at 10:00 a.m. By 10:02, some of them will be full. So we do try to let people know ahead of time the date that, you know, it will be this Monday. The library also has received a grant. It's a cultural recovery grant from the Mass Cultural Council. It was for just over $39,000. It does not have to be spent right away, but we have started using it. We're doing a lot of our programs with that because we don't have programming in our budget. And we're also buying some more materials to diversify our collection a bit more than it already is. We also just want to point out, we do have a lot of visitors. In May, we had over 2,700 visitors. August, our busiest month last year, we had over 3,300 visitors. So we are really gearing up. And we sent our parking letter that 67% of people in our last survey, parking was their number one complaint. And for us, it's not a result of this, it's been years. But we have ideas. We're open to talking about them and hoping we can help improve things a little bit.
Share your ideas.
We have a trustee who has plans. He has drawings. He used, he had met with former DPW head and shared them. But we've got that whole green space in front of the library that we would love to put parking in. The actual grass space, not the painted space. Well, the plan that we saw added two extra spots, but we have, we think we could add quite a few more.
You're talking about the green?
Where the pine tree is, which the pine tree was coming down anyway. But the land has parking right in front of the building. If we moved it to the other side, we could put in, I think, a number of spaces versus just the two extra.
So basically, it'll kind of, look, the green area will be curbed, which was originally the plan anyway with those greens. And whether it's in front or the other side, it's definitely going to improve the number of spots. Currently, the current plan shows it facing the building.
Which is okay, except it adds fewer. I think we could add more on the other side. And for us, I did go on the walk around town with the former town planner and one of the engineering companies. We did talk about it. At that point, the town planner then told us that the solution was to park back here. It's not reasonable for our patrons. They have books, babies, seniors. Even our staff were happy to park over here, but in the winter, some of them get out at 8:00. And it's not safe crossing. Just earlier this year, we had a woman who had to park here for one of our adult crafts. She went through the common, she tripped over a big block of ice in the sidewalk, and she came in all bloody, scraped up. So for us, it's not a reasonable option. Maybe for some of our staff, but not for long-term and not for the winter for us.
You know, as I said at that meeting beforehand, it's been an issue for a long time. We're not the only town. If you talk to any of the stores on High Street and Quentin, they'll give you the same story. It's same with your library, too. Not enough parking. It's an issue everywhere. Somebody said, "Oh, we should be nice for like a Conker." Well, Conker, you have metered parking or you go to municipal parking. So everybody has the same issue, it's just a matter of how we solve it.
Yeah, so we just would like to be a part of the communication. One trustee in particular joined the board 17 years ago because of parking. He's got ideas, he's got drawings, he's got plans, he is ready to jump in and help out. So we just would like to be a part of the conversation.
Yeah. Who was that, Alex?
Al Carlin.
Oh, okay. She sent him down to see Bill.
Yeah, I know he, he met with Paul when Paul was here. And they went outside, and they walked through, and he and I walked through this week again. And his ideas seem viable to me. You know, I'm not the expert, but it would be great to pass it on to see if it would work out.
Yeah, I'm Bill's assistant.
Thank you.
All right?
Right.
Very busy, very exciting.
We're very busy. It's wonderful. It really is. People are really excited to come in. We have brand-new babies. We had baby time this morning. And you have little tiny babies who just give you big gummy grins when they walk in the door. And we had one this morning with just the cheeks and the gull, and it's great. And then, you know, we keep seeing them as they grow and grow and grow. So it really is a community over there.
Yeah. Kirsten, any?
It's just amazing, all that you're doing. And we have friends from other towns that come here to come to the Sterling Library because of everything that you're doing.
Yes.
And I just want to say thank you for your professional letter and all of the statistics that went along with it.
Dave?
Wow. I didn't know that much activity went on in that building. Thank you, and I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you. Long time coming, Alex.
Thank you.
All right, then, anybody else have any questions for Alex?
Sorry, Karen lost the golden trophy.
There was somebody from the meeting that was held last week at the church.
The trustees, but not the Friends. They're very separate. So I had let Robin know when I saw that. But the Friends have not been involved at all. They run the craftery out of the church. They are not concerned about parking. They send all their vendors over here anyway. But the trustees were there.
Yeah. And I, and I feel bad that a lot of our patrons with the preschool park at the library lost, which causes an issue for your parking, which isn't an issue, you know, in the morning, but it's...
Okay, we're not in the parking.
I know. I just apologize.
Seriously. Two weeks ago, we talked parking elsewhere. So anyway, thank you, Alex.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
Oh, that's great.
Okay. Next, we, is Tim Murray. A very patient man, Tim. Want to just go to the podium?
Really bored. Oh, really bored.
No, I don't think he's bored. Yeah, go ahead. All right, next on the agenda is an appointment to the Fair Committee. Eh, eh, eh! Rude women, oof. Anyway.
You can leave that open, thank you. Tim.
I'm already Beeman Road. And I was a volunteer for the Sterling Fair Committee last year. And every day, I worked at the Sterling Fair as a volunteer. Did practically everything there was. At that point, it's the, being a very active volunteer. Doug had suggested I become a member of the committee. And I said, "That was great." Because I said, at one point, I said, "What am I doing?" I said, "I feel, because I'm doing all this stuff, but I said, 'Am I a volunteer? Am I a member? What's the scoop?'" My understanding is, is that you're making appointments to the, to, on your agenda, appointments to the fair. I just wanted to let you know that I've already done the State Ethics Commission Conflict of Interest Law Training and also the study on the Conflict of Interest Law for Remunerous Employees. I have it right here. Do you want to copy?
You're going to bring that to the town clerk.
Okay, the town clerk.
And get sworn in. And two things, Tim. Whether you're a volunteer or on the committee, you're still not getting paid.
I understand that.
But also, as a member of the committee, you actually get to vote on some of the decisions moving forward, especially the monetary ones. So, any questions for Tim?
No, thank you for volunteering all the previous work that you've done.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for volunteering. I know if you watch these meetings, I think the volunteers, because of all people like you, we could move forward. So thank you.
Well, I'm actually hoping, because I've been retired for a few years now. I used to be engineer. Yes, I know, there's a lot of things you could say about engineering. It's good and bad, but it's like, I do want to...
You guys say you're lawyers.
I'm an old agent, so I have a license to practice for the Internal Revenue Service. So it's like, that's another good, you know, oh, fun. Anyway, I do want to, at the state, that it's like, I do want to get more involved in the committee and actually volunteer in other places as well, too. And be in other committees as well, too.
All right.
You're welcome.
And my talents as much as possible.
Very nice. Thank you, Tim. And I did see you running around up there last year.
Oh, was it parking?
Yes. I usually do the two days. What do you think you're, they're gonna, your focus will be?
I want to cut back a little bit on how much I volunteered last year, because I really volunteered for like everything.
Yeah.
I found I didn't enjoy the fair. I could always go to the Sterling Fair, and I didn't enjoy it as much as I could because I was always doing something. So I'm going to like pick some key areas. But main focus is, it's like that, is that, again, with my technical background, I was corralling volunteers and basically getting, filling those areas that we needed, you know, we needed people for, specific areas. So it wasn't like, people were, "Oh, I want to volunteer for the Sterling Fair thing." Okay, we have all these volunteers, but no one knows what they're doing. So I took it upon myself, along with Doug, and I said, "Here are the categories we have." I said, "I'm going to go after those people that have special talents in those areas. I've got spreadsheets, and I've got Word documents. I said, "I can integrate them." I said, "I can get the emails out." I said, "I can get, I can get people organized, we can get them down in all these areas." I said, "We won't have any shortfalls." I said, "We'll get people volunteering for what they really want to volunteer for." So I intend to repeat that, at least that, that portion, I'm going to definitely...
And that's a big deal. It's a big deal. So I would entertain a motion that we appoint Tim to the Fair Committee.
Sold.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
You and I?
Smith and I.
Krantz and I.
Thank you.
All set. Thanks, Tim. And then, so you're going to bring those down to the town clerk when you get a chance?
Sure.
And she will swear you in.
All right.
All righty.
Tim, I think they did a masterful job of parking over at the Sterling Fair.
Thank you very much. I was one of those running around, literally.
I was trying to get the engineer to work.
Okay, you want to tell us a little bit about this? The appointment to the Monmouth City Regional Committee.
You have more appointments?
There are more appointments than there is.
Oh.
There are two more.
You have two more.
I believe they both already been involved in the fair in the past.
Tanya, definitely. Oh, I see this. Yeah, all right. So, yeah, Tanya has been part of the fair for years. I do know that for a fact. And then Brianna also. So I would entertain a motion to reappoint Tanya and Brianna to the Fair Committee.
Sold.
Second.
All those in favor?
You and I?
Smith and I.
Krantz and I. Okay. Thank you, Tom. That oversight, I get so excited.
Nobody mention parking on that in particular?
Seriously. MRPC.
Every year, we have to appoint someone.
Right.
Was, last few years, it was joint development.
Right. So you want one of us to be part of that?
Or designate me?
Is this something we can send over to the Finance Committee to do? Oh, I would nominate Joe King, for sure. So, want to give a little explanation as to what?
So the primary person comes from the planning board, and we...
Patty's currently, though, I think you're the backup or MJTC.
I was MJTC, yeah.
The secondary, I think, comes from the select board, and we usually appoint one person to participate there. So if you have a volunteer or want to push it off to another one and figure out who it wants to be, or delegate someone?
I can't see, because I'm not looking at her, but is...
I think she's raising her hand.
She's raising her hand.
I thought so. Do we know when their meetings are? Richard, what can you tell her about it?
Well, meetings are not all that frequent.
I think they're quarterly.
It's a time drain. It is important for us to have an oar in the water. Lots of things come up in terms of opportunities for the community. And unless we have somebody at the table, we often miss those opportunities. So congratulations on that.
Don't feel bad, Kirsten. He got into the trash, so you're fine. Richard, those are during the day, usually, right? In the morning? The MRPC ones?
Yes. At the moment, they've all been Zoom, thanks for meetings.
Okay. So if you want any more of a wealth of information about it, see Richard.
Fight involved, I said.
He's a good sharer. Okay, well, I would make a motion that we appoint Kirsten as a representative to the MRPC.
Sold.
All those in favor?
Smith and I.
Further discussion? Okay, Kirsten, it's all set.
No, did you say?
Yes. Thank you. Kind of goes along with what you've been doing in the past, anyway.
It's true, yes.
All right, then we have an appointment to the Cultural Council, which...
Judy was unable to attend. I think they said they were trying to open their pool up. But Melissa Warren is, I believe, well-known to us. She obviously does the senior work off with the EDC. No, that's Chalmers. Melissa Warren does the senior work off and sitting in some of the, yeah, helping out in some of the offices, town clerk and the treasurer, collector. Too many Melissa's. So, well-known to us and involved in a few other things.
And she also brings her dog. She also brings the children aspect, the nature aspect.
There was one more.
Yes.
Yeah, she, she has contributed to the committee.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we appoint Melissa Warren to the Cultural Council.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All of you favor?
You and I?
Smith and I.
Krantz and I. All right. What's that? And then, your report?
Sure. The new facilities manager started on Monday. Chuck Goss, he was at our last meeting to be introduced, at least to begin with, getting started. He'll be Monday, Tuesdays, and half of Wednesday here, and then Thursday and Friday in West Boylston. We had an assistant collector come in when Terry was out. She'll be filling the interim role as we get that posted for the assistant treasurer. Now that that's open, we are making headway on the ADA items for the beach bathroom. We have to get that done by the end of the fiscal year, so they're working on the concrete pad currently. Hopefully, have that done by the end of the week, barring any significant weather. There are two potential earmarks in the House and Senate. One for some wayfinding signage, and the other one, additional beach funds. Should those pass, that'll help out what we're trying to do. The major portion of the construction is complete over at Peg's Pond. I think they were finishing up with the hydro seeding. That's the path around there. ADA compliant and leads over to the senior center. Hydro seeding, I think, today. Those are the major things going on. Still have a couple, like one more item with the playground over at the school. We're meeting on the school floor, hopefully, next week. When it comes, a few of the trees have already come down at the town beach, so we're making some headway there. When it comes to the other upgrades, we do have the easements to work on for the septic at the 1835. at the 1835.